Protection of them. We ask your wisdom for the decisions they make as they represent us. Father, we ask that you be with our police department here in our city as they protect us, as they risk their lives. We ask your protection on them. And while we're at it, Lord, we want to ask the protection of all the officers nationwide in every level of government that are risking their lives for the people of our nation and state. Father, we also lift up to you tonight the people that have been damaged in the storms that have hit. And we ask, Father, that you help them put their lives back together and meet every need that they have. Father, tonight, we ask that you, we pray, Father, that you bless this meeting tonight. And we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Approval of the agenda?
George, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Melvin?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Melvin. Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay. No awards and presentations tonight, and nobody signed up for public forum. Move on to staff reports. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Mr. President.
You got a pay raise for a second there.
Yeah. We just about sold out of lots. I think we may have one more lot left in Bear Hill. So we're just about got that situation handled. Been working on the new comprehensive plan. The current plan was 208 to 2018. It's a ten-year plan, and I'm already starting to work on that. Mentioned a while back, but I want to mention it again, a need from you folks, what you perceive to be short-term and long-term goals. And by that, I mean for short-term, the next five years. What do you expect the city needs to do within the next five? And what you perceive the city needs to do within the next 10? That needs to be part of the plan to help guide not only this council, but future councils as to what needs to be done in the city. If you look at some of the very successful cities around in this area, you'll see that they're high-growth cities. They offer a lot of things to the general public, which draws people to their communities. The more people you have in your community, the more draw you will have of commercial development, which adds more tax base. We need to start looking at a lot of the quality-of-life things. I'm going to pick a city. City of Derby is one that does, is very good at quality-of-life stuff. They have 20 miles of sidewalk, several brand-new parks, things that will draw people to that community. Also, when a business, and I deal with this quite often in trying to get businesses into our community, they look at our community and say, okay, is this a place that I want to invest millions of dollars in? Because if our community gives the impression that we're on the way down and not on the way up, that's going to impact our efforts into getting more commercial businesses and more services for our community. So I'd like for you to start thinking about that. Also, based off of what you tell me, we'll help develop a survey that we'll send out to the general public and get their feelings on. And so it's going to be very important that we get that done, because I'd like to make sure that we're kind of ready to go the first part of January on this. It's a pretty thick plan. So I need your help.
Jack, would you like to see a response from council members on that?
Yes.
Would you have a date when you want to hear from everybody by?
Well, I'm giving you a lot of lead time here, but it sure would be nice to have it by, say, the end of October. That would help, because we need to develop a survey to send out to the general public, get back and incorporate it into the plan. Now, some of the things that you might, and I don't want to necessarily suggest these to you, but these are things that've always floated around. A water park of some sort, a swimming pool. Could be more plantings in the right-of-way, more sculptures, more parks, maybe developing another park, or developing the park that we have with more available activities. Also, we'll be looking at the housing stock. The Millennials, I can't pronounce it very well, are going to be major players in the future of cities within the next five to 10 years. They typically, at least surveys indicate now, that they're not much in buying houses, but they do rent, and that's why you're seeing an influx of duplexes and apartments and things like that. And all of these things, we have to take into account when we do our long-range plans to make sure that we're providing the services that future, excuse me, future people of Park City are going to want and need. So that's basically it. Other than, I did have a gentleman come to see me today about a drainage situation that we need to think about. It was an area that we annexed from the county, a group of houses. It's a drainage situation. Typically, we view drive approaches, and that means how you get from the public street into a lot as being the responsibility of the owner of the property. There's a whole series of houses along here. Some people just dump dirt into the ditch and drive over it to get to their property, which blocks the drainage for everybody else. Some of them are so old, they've caved in or rotted and so forth and so on. And, you know, we're probably talking maybe 15 or 20 people being impacted about this. So, you know, later on, not this council meeting, but maybe we need to think about, how do we handle this? Do we just say, go and tell them that they need to replace their drive entrances? Do we help them do that? How are we going to deal with this particular problem? So we have more than just this as a drainage problem, and several council members are aware of it, and there are particular areas that there are, that we need to deal with this whole drainage issue, one way or the other. So that's all my report, Mr. President. If there's any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them.
Thank you. Say anything?
Oh, I might say one other thing, is that also be thinking too, we need to start thinking about upgrading our zoning regulations. Been getting some conversations about RV problems, and we have the sign issue that we're going to have to address, because currently, I don't think our zoning regulations are where they need to be for signage to meet requirements of the state law or federal law. We'll need to be thinking about some of those issues that you have a chance to go through the zoning regulations, and things that you think that might need to be addressed. And that's a whole process in and of itself. Both it and the comprehensive plan has to go through the Planning Commission for a hearing. There's notices that we have to give out prior to having that hearing. They hear it, and then it's presented back to the city council.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Director of Public Works, Rick? I'm sorry. Hold on just a second, Rick. All the buttons are off a little bit, so go ahead, Tom.
Okay. On the comprehensive plan, Jack, are you going to provide a copy of the last one to us?
Well, my understanding is that every council member got one when they, but you've been on there quite a while, so maybe you didn't get the latest.
Well, I served on the last comprehensive plan that we put together, where we actually pulled a group together to put it together. And I didn't know why we're not going to do that in the future. It's been several years ago.
It's not a group. By state law, it's got to be the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Cannot just be a group. Now, a group can come to the Planning Commission hearings.
We did a pretty drawn-out and comprehensive list once, and we multi-voted it in a group to put numbers to the plan of the things that were to be done over long-term.
Well, there was a list of goals and things that we wanted to see done.
Correct.
And there were several meetings that we did, but that wasn't a comprehensive plan. That was...
Okay, but that would, okay.
That was, that was a good situation, because one of the things on the top of the list was the police station in the city hall. So evidently, we kind of moved along that line, but yes, we did have a list.
But we're not planning on doing that in the future. Having any kind of a group meeting to workshop or anything like that to discuss?
That would be up to the city council if they wanted to do that.
Okay. I haven't heard that as being an option, so I might ask the mayor about that.
Yeah. We've done that before, making a list of things that might be a good approach.
There's a list out there, and it would be nice if we had a copy of it so that we could review what was done. I think it's been about four or five years ago now.
I think Dennis told me it's on the website, but if not, I do have a copy of it, and I can send it to everybody.
George?
What signage are you referring to? Signage? Signage.
Like for parking RVs and stuff?
You were referring to signage. Oh, political signs.
Oh.
And signs in general.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I think Doug can address it. He's looked at it quite a bit about signage.
I was just wondering, that signage is a pretty broad term. I didn't know if he was talking about street signs, highway signs?
No, I'm talking about business signs and people that are putting them in a right-of-way.
Okay. Okay. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Report for this evening, September 26, 2017. Prior to my department comments, would like to remind our residents that the first Saturday of October, we're having a brush-in-limb day. The October 7th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the west end of Happen Plain Park. Normally do this twice a year. It's a good service for the residents. We appreciate it when you bring your limbs and branches down. Keeps us from having to pick them up on the right-of-way or in a drainage structure somewhere. Once again, that's the first Saturday of October, October 7th, from 8:00 to 1:00, west end of McLean Park. Park Department?
Rick, they just need to bring a photo ID showing Park City resident, is that correct?
They do need to have an ID that shows that they're a resident of Park City. Yes, sir.
Is there a limit on how many loads they can bring?
No.
Okay.
No, it can't be a commercial business, but no, a resident, as many as they have. We actually appreciate that.
Water bill? You don't want to work something like that?
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
In the Park Department, we've had two areas where we've completed our plantings on the Prairie Winds Circular and also on the entrance to the community building. Those are complete. We did assist Park City Pride with the setup for the Eats and Beats event that they had last Saturday evening. We provided some of the trash receptacles, portable restrooms, and barricades for that. Did speak with, or by text, Dee Stewart told me that she estimated the attendance at that at about 250, so it sounded like we had a good turnout for that. In the Street Department, we did put up our flags in observance of Labor Day. Last week, on the 20th, we accepted delivery on our front loader that council had authorized, geez, it seems like three or four months ago. It's been a while back, but the guys are happy to get this. It's brand-new. We were going to bring it up this evening and prior to the meeting and let everyone look at it, but it was raining, and we didn't think that everyone would want to stop in the rain and look at that. So council shows an interest, we could do that, maybe next council meeting if it's not too bad of weather. But we're really pleased to get this loader. Also, we've started two street projects within the last couple of weeks. One is Village Estates Phase Five. That's located the southwest corner of that Village Estates development. We're currently about 30% through with the dirt work on that. We've also started the 2017 Street Reconstruction. That includes three streets here in town. Currently got the asphalt removed, base rock put down on those. And then our Water and Sewer Department, first two weeks of September, we, our work order average was 24 per day.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Thank you. Attorney? Doug Motion?
President and Council, I just have a short update for you, kind of a follow-up from a little discussion that I had with you earlier in the summer about some of the highlights of the actions and non-actions of the legislature as it affected cities in this last legislative session. Under new laws that were adopted, well, let me start by saying that there wasn't a whole lot. They took up most of their time with education, but they did do a few things. And I'll preface it by saying, really, nothing that did us a whole lot of harm, and likewise, nothing that really did us a whole lot of good. But I'll give you some quick examples of some of the things that they had, that they passed. House Bill 2278 provides immunity to cities from liability for any wrongful or negligent acts by our employees who are carrying concealed while performing work duties for the city. And as you may know, that's something that can happen now. Employees are able, when they're outside of the building and in vehicles and outside of public buildings, able to carry concealed. Another House Bill, 2137, now allows you, as governing body members, to serve as volunteer EMS workers, volunteer firefighters, and volunteer ambulance drivers, if you choose. And you can receive the usual pay for that, which would mean the pay that other volunteers receive. Prior to that statute being adopted, that would have been considered an incompatibility of office, you being a governing body member and then being a volunteer firefighter, EMS, or ambulance driver in the community, or in this community and other communities. There also was a statute adopted, HB 2310, relating to executive sessions, effective July. And after that statute became effective, not only when we go into executive session do we have to state the authority for doing it, commonly we, personnel matter, pending litigation or threatened litigation, or some of the things we talk about, but you have to give now at least a general statement of the subject matter. I think that'll be fleshed out a little bit more. I'm not sure what that means exactly, but to the extent we start going forward and have executive sessions, I'll try to do that. Senate Bill 19 limits the city's ability to abate property taxes for IRBs, TIFs, and neighborhood revitalization districts by removing from the ability to abate the taxes eight mills that school districts have for their capital outlay. So it's a, it's a way of protecting the school districts from abatements, from at least a portion of the abatements. And then finally, House Bill 2277 established authority for cities to pass an ordinance to declare an area known as a common consumption area for the consumption of alcohol. I'm not aware that there's anything that fits in our city right now, but it is a, it's a tool that can be used, and it can be a declaration of an area outdoors, indoors, both outdoors and indoors. And it can include public properties, including streets if they're closed. And it still requires approval by the ABC. If the city decided it wanted to do that, it would adopt an ordinance and define the district by boundaries and declare that it would establish rules and regulations, and then it would get a permit for a period of a year. With respect to things that didn't happen, there were several attempts to try to deal with what I'm going to call the tax-led calculation that we have to now go through every year when we do the budget to see whether we're going to trigger with our budget an election. There was, there was an attempt by the House to adopt a bill that would have exempted from the calculation employee benefit costs. I think everybody's recognizing that those are costs that cities are facing, and they're going nowhere but up likely. That failed. So it would have been an assist to cities every year in doing their budget work, but it didn't go anywhere. Another House bill that was in the same area was an attempt to change the process from being an automatic trigger when the tax lid hits a certain level, it's defined in the statute, an automatic trigger for an election, to a trigger that would then require a protest petition from citizens of the city, which would make it not automatic and maybe not necessarily an election if there was a budget that exceeded the tax-led calculation. Again, that didn't pass. And then finally, there was an attempt, this is just kind of general, an attempt to establish reporting for third-party, out-of-state vendors who sold on the internet to residents of Kansas, an attempt to try to generate some revenue. For whatever reasons, that didn't go anywhere. So for now, I guess that's more of a personal thing for all of us. For now, we're safe when we do that. But the legislature's now out of session, and so it'll probably be another eight or nine months before I talk to you again. So until then, I guess we're safe and sound. I didn't entertain any questions.
You have a question? Be nothing, thank you. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda? George Glover?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, new business. Consider appointment of Brandy Bailey as council representative for Ward Two. And this is after the resignation of Joel, that moved out of Ward. Brandy's here tonight. Any questions or any comments or anything?
Make a motion, we approve the mayor's recommendation.
Okay. I'll second it. The motion and a second. Any discussion? Melvin?
No. With her being appointed there, now will she stay there, or she's running for?
Right. It depends a little bit. I believe it would. I would have to probably check with the city attorney.
I think if she's still on the ballot, she would technically still be in the election.
Yeah. If she were to be successful in November, then she would be ineligible for the position that you're appointing to right now. That would be an incompatibility. You couldn't be both. So she would then accept the elected position, and this position would become vacant again.
Okay. I didn't know. She had a choice whether...
No, it's not her choice.
Okay.
It's, this office becomes vacant if she succeeds in the election in November.
Okay.
If she fails, then she serves this until the 19th. Yes.
November 2019 is when this one will begin. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight-zero, and we'll have the city clerk administer the oath, and then I would ask, after that, we'll take a five or 10-minute break. I request a five-minute break after. Is that right? Yeah? I'm hold. Second? All second that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Moving on to Item B on the agenda. Update on issuance of Tax Economic Development Revenue Bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a multifamily housing facility to be located in Park City. And Mike Loveland, thanks for coming tonight. If you could just give us an update. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Mr. President, Councilperson, Mike Loveland. The, we'll talk about the two pieces here. On the Echo Hills Apartments, we have got our appraisal has been updated. We had to add in the, well, on the appraisal, we don't have an outlet mall, and instead we're going to have a big-box development. So they took that into consideration, and it was good that we had the other one to replace the outlet. And then the market study was updated. That was the appraisal, the first one. And then we have a market study that updates, and it also looks at the outlet versus the big box. And they're looking at the numbers for the project, and both of those have stayed relatively the same. And the environmental was updated, and that's the one that actually took into account the archaeological study, which we had completed. We had a conference call today with the HUD lender, which is Walker Dunlop, regarding a checklist for the submission, which should occur. We were hoping to have it done before the end of this month, but it looks like it'll be next week before we get that in. And one thing additionally that's real positive for us is Key Construction is a contractor on the project, and Key is now going to be a part-owner of the project and put their financial statement up to help us on the project. And they're very well-known too, HUD. They've done a whole bunch of HUD projects, and so that was another positive thing that's happened since I was up here and talked to you last. And then on the Colette Properties, I'm sure you're probably curious about that too, we provided them with the existing environmental study. They also got them a copy of the existing soils report that we had done on the property. They met with their tenant again this week. They, they're working on site plans. I think one of the issues they're looking at is, do they face towards 53rd Street, or do they face towards I-135? Because that gives them a little bit different configuration on the property. They're currently not ready, I keep asking, they're currently not ready to tell me, or at least the tenant has said they don't want to reveal who they are yet. And I understand that, they're going to be a little further along in the process. And I'm... And, and I'm guessing that they're also working on the building layouts and costs and, and issues on, on the lease. And so anyway, they're moving along on it and we're moving along on the apartments and I know I've got a deadline in front of me, so I'll keep moving that direction. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
George Capes?
Well first, thanks for coming in. I've noticed that Arby's has been doing a very good business down there. And I've also noticed around, usually where one of them comes in, a fast food, another one shows up, do you have any more bites on any other, any other restaurants?
Yeah, and, and most of the bites have always been get that anchor in there and then we'll, we'll come. And I hope they're also looking over their shoulders and seeing how well Arby's is doing and I drove by there tonight and
They're doing very well.
They were doing real, real well, so. But the Collet Group, they're going to end up buying seven of our lots in addition to fifteen acres in the middle where they'll put their, their big box, so we'll be working with them. And then we'll have an additional four lots and twenty acres, you know, for, for other uses, too, so.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, and I'm going to be a little bit petty, but how long is the Woodmont sign going to stay up?
You know, I haven't thought about that, but
I have, I see it every time I drive by there.
I, I'll do something about that.
Appreciate it.
So, okay.
Thank you.
George?
Yeah, I know you had talked about the apartments, when do they start, Mr. Loveland? When did the development start on the apartments?
You know, February twenty-second is the, the date on the IRB, so we want to be closed before that date and technically we can start construction the next day after we close on the loan, so. Whether it'll be the next day or shortly thereafter, probably depend on what the weather's doing and
I appreciate you coming and doing the updates. Arby's is doing very well, I've been by there and been in there, always a lot of people there, so I, I'm encouraged by that. As far as a big, big box store, we won't know who that is for some time, is that what you're saying?
You know, there's a, a chance in the next thirty to sixty days, they'll let us know who, I mean, they'll, they'll let us know before they close off, you know, but I think they just want to get their, their arms around exactly what they got and, and and then they've, they've got to negotiate their, I'm under contract to one group and then they've got to get the other group under contract or, you know, leases or, or, and getting comfortable with what the numbers are. And then here's the site plan, the building layout, and then once everybody's in agreement on that, you know, then I think they'll tell me who it is and then it'll take them a few more months to close and, you know, finalize.
Yeah, because I think once people know who that big box is, may draw in other people, prospective people to come in there instead of you know, have that tie-down that's going to bring people in. I think that would have a lot of focus. I also like the fact that Key Construction has been on it, I think that puts focus on the actual development. But I appreciate you coming out.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Great, thank you for coming in tonight, Mr. Loveland.
Thank you for your support.
Okay. Item C, consider approval of Wichita Metropolitan Area Planning Organization Planning Walkable Places Program Pedestrian Connectivity Master Plan, Jack?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another step in the process of of the grant that we were able to obtain for the study to look at how and where, when we should put sidewalks in the city of Park City and I think something that is kind of long overdue. It will also help us that when grants come up for building sidewalks, we'll have a plan that we can present to those people. This particular agreement really solidifies WAMPO's responsibility and our responsibility as the grant goes forward. Once they have this in place, they will send out a RFP that I've prepared out to consultants all over the United States to get them to submit their proposals. Then we'll put together a panel of people to review those proposals and then from that select one person. As with all WAMPO grants, if you go over the amount that you applied for, then that cost is borne by the city. I put specifically in the RFP what our budget was. So I'm hoping that somebody comes up and thinks it's a hundred thousand dollar deal, they won't even submit because they know what our budget is. There is an additional cost with that is we have to pay one percent of the, the amount that we're getting the grant for that goes to help fund WAMPO their ongoing costs and stuff. So if there's any other question, I'll try to answer them. But this will kick it off and, and once we get to sign and we'll release them to go ahead and do the send out the RFP.
Have you had any thoughts of where you're putting the sidewalks at?
That's what they're to determine. In there, I requested that they, we will form a, a citizens group. They'll meet with the citizens group and get the citizens' viewpoint on sidewalks and where they think they should be and you know, do we have hiking, biking trails along with it and so forth and so on. They're supposed to also look at where would be the, the best places to put sidewalks in relationship to where people go. Okay? So for example, they might suggest, of course, we already have sidewalks to leakers, but typically they look at, you know, generators such as that. They, they might say, okay, to get people connected up to what Mike Loveland's doing down there, we might want to run a sidewalk down hydraulic to connect to one that we put in on Fifty-third Street so people can, can walk and stuff. And this goes back again to what I was talking about, the millennials are walkers and bike riders. And so they, they're going to like the sidewalks. And I do know that there are people my age that walk every day and and sidewalks are very beneficial for them as well, so. They're going to look at the whole, Scott, they're, they're supposed to get the public input. We think that's very important that they, they know what the people here feel and to have, and they will report to you before the, they're not going to walk up one day and say, here, here's the final report. They're going to come up to you and, and kind of give you a summary of what they're looking at and stuff and then maybe the week or so later come up with the final report.
Okay. Now you say people your age, are, are these going to be movable sidewalks or something? I had one request that go from like High Point, no, High Ridge to the park there. Might be a good
You, you might want to sit in on that committee and put your two cents worth.
Well, I'm, I'm just passing on, okay.
Yeah, but they'll look at, at centers where, where people live
Sure.
and where they might want to go. And it just makes common sense that you connect the two up together.
Thank you. Tom?
I was going to say, walkable communities is a nationwide thing going now. A lot of the under forty group want to be able to walk to places of interest. They want to be able to walk to dining, they want to be able to walk to the parks and stuff like that. I'm going to make a motion that we approve this.
Jim, you were next? Do you want a second?
Yeah, I'll second that for discussion, I guess.
Go ahead.
Just one question was, this is just, again, reiterating, we're just approving the ability to conduct the study. We get another opportunity once we find out what the costs are to factor this into the plan, the actual physical improvements. This isn't, this isn't committing us to doing this, this is committing us to doing the study.
In other words, it's not committing us to build anything.
Yeah, we're not committing to build this yet.
Correct.
Right.
This will just give you a plan to look at what the standards are. Maybe we put standards within our zoning regulations requiring commercial businesses to put sidewalks in front of their business. It'll look at all of those aspects of, of that, how wide they should be for, for walking versus bike paths. Also, one of the things that we wanted to look at is how we might connect up with other cities. You know, we've got Kechai basically buttoned up against this Valley Center in Wichita and, and you know, where would be logical points that we would connect into their system? And, and that's something else that other, well especially Wichita is looking at the regionality of sidewalks.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to clarify.
Good question.
Have a motion and a second? Anything further? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight zero, motion passes. Okay, item D, discussion item only, about restricting panhandlers in the city. Doug?
President and council, I'm, I'm not exactly sure why the mayor had this on there. I'm prepared to give you some information about the, the ordinance that we have on the books that addresses the panhandlers in the sense of what I mean by that are people that are near our streets with signs, dogs, guitars, soliciting funds. At present, in our municipal code, it's, it's for your information, section fourteen dash one oh eight, there is a prohibition against the solicitation of rides or businesses. And, and that is any place in the street. And a street is defined as the, the traveled right-of-way, including medians from property line to property line. So I think there was a question at some point about whether people in the medians were, were subject to being told, get off or to be ticketed, and the answer is yes, they are. And then this was done in twenty, well, a long time ago, twenty eleven, where I think we had a similar problem and we decided to try to define it and so it was within ten feet of the curb or streets that don't have curbs within ten feet of the pavement. That is an area where there should not be any solicitation of rides or of business, so. From what I know and what I've seen, my primary focus when I see anybody is really at the intersection of I-135 and Sixty-first Street is where I've seen people. They're, they're in violation. So I, I don't know that there's anything further that we need to do, but I'd be glad to try to answer questions if there are any.
George?
Yeah, I just have one. On the panhandlers that we're seeing, is there any way we can possibly direct them to resources that may help them? If they're looking for money, if they're looking for help with a particular thing, that we can direct them? Maybe a resource list or guide to kind of help them?
We, we could, I'm, I'm sure, that'd probably fall on the police department. And, and, and maybe I'm too jaded and not sufficiently I don't know what the right word is, but I, I, I think most of those, most of the people that, most of the problems that I, that I have and I haven't heard specifics about our city because we really don't have a lot of it, but in Wichita, there's a lot. And what I've heard is that they don't want that information, they want the corner and in fact, they they fight for the corner physically and because it's a moneymaker and, and they really aren't looking for, for services, but but I think that's a suggestion and I'm sure we could do that.
George? Anybody else have any questions or comments on, on that ordinance? Okay. If no one else has anything else, we can take no action and if the mayor has something we want to bring to the next meeting, then they do that. Okay? Okay. Item E, consider bids on intersection work at Sixty-first Street North and Prospect. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Up there on the screen, I don't know if you can see it on your screen, that's a picture of Sixty-first Street and Prospect, that's where the warehousing and, and the metals, big metal company is. If you can look up there in the upper right, you can see an area of the street that's just caving in. They fill it with asphalt and a few days later they come back, put more asphalt in it and just keeps pushing and pushing and the whole general road there is getting pretty bad. The, the situation there is a lot of big semis carrying a lot of weight turn off of Sixty-first Street onto Prospect and vice versa. And that causes a lot of pushing on the intersection and stuff. And it's getting fairly bad, and so we went out and gotten bids to replace a, a portion of the intersection, well, most of the intersection in fact, which nowadays, and you can see it down at Fifty-third and also in hydraulic, they're replacing intersections with concrete and not asphalt because they're finding that especially when you have a high traffic, traffic area with trucks, they tend to groove the road and push the asphalt and so forth and so on. So we took bids on this for your consideration tonight, I gave each one of you a sheet of paper. We had four bidders. I'd estimated it'd be around thirty-seven thousand. Had some go above me and had some go below me. I'm fairly pleased with the low bidder. The low bidder was Andel Construction for thirty-three thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and sixteen cents. If you approve this tonight, this would all come out of the special street and highway. We currently have unobligated around three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in special street and highway. And we'd like to get on to this before it gets, gets too bad this winter. So anyway, that's the bids that we took. There would be a little extra cost, maybe another three thousand or so. I'd want a testing laboratory to test the base, sub-base and the concrete strength so we know when we could release it back to traffic. We would have to shut that section of Sixty-first Street off. In the specifications, special provisions, I had it that they have to notify all residents from Seneca to Broadway and businesses and then along Prospect. Traffic down Prospect would be diverted down to Fifty-ninth and to Broadway and then they'll find a way back to the interstate.
Jack, what's the normal standard width of, of a road? Are we making this eight inches, is that, is that pretty standard?
Eight inches, yeah. That, that's what we've used on Fifty-third Street, the intersection's on Fifty-third, the one, the KDOT. It's a pretty consistent for this type of soil and this type of road treatment. So it's eight inches of concrete placed on seven inches of crushed stone and then we have GeoGrid that's placed on that and what that is, it's, it's like a, well, it's a grid. It sits on the dirt and allows water flow to go through it and also provides extra support also.
Tom?
I was going to say, this is something that we've got on a long-term plan, which will be in our comprehensive plan, redoing Fifty-third or Sixty-first Street from Broadway till there. Will this be something that we'll replace again? Or will this be something we'll try to work into that project?
Well, hopefully if we get it in a few years and maybe
Widen it or something?
Three to four years from now, if we're lucky, and that's an if. When I gave my spiel before the, the selection committee, they, they felt like that Park City should pay for it. It was kind of their attitude. Hopefully we'll have a different selection committee when it comes up again next time. Or maybe we, we won't get it.
Well, but my question is, is this something we're going to throw away in five years? Or will this be something we incorporate into that road improvement?
Well, you can look at it this way, we can, we can keep throwing money and time and labor at it and still throw it away. I mean, it's, what it is, is what it is, whether it's asphalt or concrete. I would say that
My question is, are we designing it in such a way that it becomes part of that project that we're going to do? And so this would be a piece that we maybe don't have to do again.
You, well, yeah, it's concrete, you can add on to it, you can drill and dial into it and add extra concrete to it, you know? Asphalt, you can add extra asphalt to it. But if you're going to do an intersection, might as well do it right. Because we do asphalt, you know, concrete's got a, a long, a twenty-five-year life. If you look at Air Cap Drive, that was built in nineteen eighty. It's holding up pretty good. You can't say that for some asphalt streets. You can't say that for some asphalt streets that we have around here, so. But no, you can add, you can definitely add on to that section if you wanted to.
Okay, so we could, if we do this now, then theoretically, we can come back and take that little chunk out of our proposal to do the rest of Sixty-first Street back to Broadway.
Yeah, well, you'd have to add some stuff to it, yeah. But you wouldn't have to tear out the cement.
That's my question.
Right. And, and the good thing about that is it's so close to the bridge, you know, that you probably wouldn't want to change the grade at all, you know? Because then you'd have to impact the bridge. Now, if this was farther to the east, you know, then there would be a good possibility that you would change the grade of the road. But I think at that point, you wouldn't because you already got established buildings there and that would be screwed up if you tried to mess too much with the road grade.
Thank you, Jack. George?
Well, is there any plans to do anything with some of those other spots between there and Broadway?
Yes.
Because there's some awful bad spot, that's not the only bad spot in there.
No. While this is shut down and everything, we're gonna go in and take care of some of those other issues on that road. There'll be patching and stuff. Now, if we paved it, now, Tom would be right, if we come in, then we'd end up tearing that out later. But what we would do now is to get the areas that are, there's a lot of potholes and things, and we'll go in and patch those and keep them going until we do get a grant.
Okay. Melvin?
That patch spot that you keep fixing right there?
Yeah.
It looks like you're coming off of Prospect going on to Sixty-first and you're catching the edge of that, right?
No, what has happened is that they're driving on Sixty-first Street, okay? And it's pushing it out beyond the pavement. If you go out there, you'll see a big hump of asphalt. And what's happening is the wheels are pushing down and then jacking the asphalt up off the roadway.
So you're saying you're skidding it?
Uh-huh.
You're saying you're, you're skidding it? Or just pushing it, yeah?
Yeah, well, it's a bad, it's a bad base. Sinks, when it sinks, the asphalt compresses because we put fresh asphalt in it and it pushes it up and out.
Okay. Well, I just wondered if it's coming off Prospect on the Sixty-first, if we need to widen that a little bit right there or something to, or you're gonna catch a corner of that and still do the-
We, we don't really see a lot of wheels, wheel rolls or anything there. It is being pushed right now.
Well, you can see the dead grass there or something, right? Where they're coming out there?
Yeah, might be. I, I don't know.
That's the cement that got pushed out, or asphalt.
I just wanted to-
Well, if it happens, we can always tack on another foot or so. I'm having an extra base put in, six inches beyond the red line. I'm having additional base put in.
Are you meaning, or excuse me, turning northbound off Sixty-first to go east? Beltway?
Right.
Uh-huh. I hope they're not swinging into that lane clip that far over. I mean, they're completely going past the westbound lane.
They got a fifty-three, fifty-three foot trailer, they probably will, won't they? Where they're gonna-
They, they can do it if they, those, those are big radius, radii there. And I guarantee you, no matter how much room you will give them-
They'll use it.
-they will still exceed that.
I understand, yeah.
They've seen that at Sixty-first and Fifty-third.
Yeah. The only other thing we can do is get a few boulders, put it there, and I might keep them into their lane. Now, going, going off of I-135, turning to go west, they kept breaking our sidewalk. Driving up on the sidewalk, there was no reason for it other than sloppy driving. So we got tired of fixing the sidewalks, so we just put in eight, eight-inch thick sidewalk and that solved that problem.
Okay. Well, I just wondered if we, we need to add on to that or, or put the boulders up, I guess.
Randy?
Jack, during fixing this section, will it be closed off? And if so, how long will it be shut down?
Well, we're estimating it'll be shut down for about seven days at least to let the concrete cure. We'll be taking test cylinders to see what the strength is at seven days. Most concrete is specified twenty-eight day concrete. They'll reach a certain per square inch strength. At seven days, we think that we'll probably give an eighty percent strength at least, if not more. We're, we're calling for a four thousand PSI concrete. So it should be pretty close to four thousand in seven days. That's why we take the test cylinders. If at seven days, we don't reach the desired PSI strength, we'll close, leave the road closed a little bit longer. But typically, usually, seven days, you can put traffic back on it. But we want to get those test cylinders to make sure that we're not prematurely letting traffic on it. We want to get a certain strength.
So the only way to get into Prospect Drive now would be to come off of the Sixty-first, or not Sixty-first, um, Broadway?
Broadway and Fifty-ninth, come up there. So they, they have a nice big Fifty-ninth Street Road and everything. You know, the people to the west here will have a little difficulty, if they want to go over to Leakers, they're gonna have to go down Seneca, hit Fifty-third, then come back up Broadway.
Jim?
I don't really have any more questions, so was going to make a motion that we approve the low-cost bid of the Pandale at thirty-three thousand, three oh nine, sixteen. We paid for this, our special, special streets and highways. One more second. One second, yeah. And then I had a couple of questions. One of them, this is conventional concrete, not for roll-down?
Not roll-down. I made them bid it just like everybody else.
Okay. And do we get the millings out of that?
Not really. I don't think it's, it's, we got more millings we can use right now. And I, I would say that when they calculate this, they calculate maybe getting those millings.
Okay. Very good. We've had, we've had good discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes eight zero.
Now, I want you to understand, there might be another three thousand or so dollars for testing with TerraCon, and that's gonna be added on to this because I'm sure you'd all want it tested.
Would that be in a way of a change order?
No, no change order. It'd be a contract with-
Part of it.
-TerraCon, separate, separate company. It's within my spending authority.
Thank you. Okay, item F, consider emergency water plan, emergency water supply plan update. Rick Norman?
Thank you, Mr. President. My agenda item doesn't require any funding. I'd like to say that, I'm sorry. Would request council's consideration on the approval of the emergency water supply The original plan was submitted many years ago. We are required by our regulating authority, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, to update this. Mayor's changed, staff changes. Believe that one of the changes on this one is a city clerk. Purpose of this supply plan identifies to the state, description of our water sources, which is Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, and also we have connection to the city of Wichita. List a little bit about our distribution, piping sizes, our three elevated tanks, their capacities, a chain of command structure with mayor and council. Is it ahead of that? Also has a list of our vendors, some of our equipment. And we do have this updated and would ask for council's approval of this.
And how, how long is this plan good for? Just until there's a change to it, or?
Well, I'm not, we, we have an inspection every three years. I'm not sure on that. My best estimate on that, Mr. President, is for three years, and I'm not certain.
Thank you, Tom.
I was gonna make a motion that we approve the recommended water supply plan, emergency plan.
Thank you, Gary?
Second.
I have one other stipulation on that, though, and I think on the approval that the mayor's gonna sign and the city clerk is gonna sign, I think that should be September twenty-sixth, not August?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's correct.
So that will be corrected?
Yes.
Hey, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes eight zero. Okay, item G. Thank you, Rick. Transfer of developer rights to Bear Hill Homeowners Association. Man, it looks like Jack, are you speaking on this?
Yes, I may have to ask Doug a little bit on if there's any high-powered questions, but primarily, this is the same thing that we did over Saddle Brook when we got the lots We certainly have no interest in it after we sell this last one lot. It needs to, the full control needs to go back to the homeowners association. We did not want to turn these rights over to the gentleman that bought all the other vacant land. We, we feel like that Bear Hill has a very excellent HOA and should be able to, to handle the developmental rights. It, when you have the developmental rights, it gives you a certain amount of power over the HOA, and I, I think it needs all to go to the HOA at this point.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, I would entertain a motion. Melvin?
I'll make a motion that we turn it over to the HOA to the Bear Hill, or turn it over.
Okay, and Gary?
Second that.
Okay. All right. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain.
Okay. Seven zero one.
You may need to get their design committee organized.
Taking steps. Item H, consider approval of inventory list to be sold at Park City Garage Sale and Purple Wave for city administration. Dana?
In your packet, you have some pictures and also a list of properties that the city would like to dispose of. They are items that are remaining over at the old city hall that we did not need to bring over to the new administration building. The list is not complete in the respect that there's a telephone system and some IT that we feel needs to just be addressed to Purple Wave. After the garage sale is over, a list will come back to you that will be a complete list for the disposition at Purple Wave.
Council, or George?
Yeah, can you give us the times of viewing that, Dana, as far as when the public can see those items?
It would be the same hours as the Park City Garage Sale. And I know that there, the, the list of, the complete list as far as like what the pricing is gonna be and the hours of the garage sale, staff will be putting that together. So I, I know it's the garage sale. I can't tell you specifically, I'm gonna say early, but I, I apologize, I don't have that information.
Is it in October, isn't it?
No, it is this weekend.
What is this weekend?
It is this weekend, yes. It's fast.
Okay. George?
Sure, I already got you there, George.
Uh, Melvin?
Where is the money gonna go back into general fund, or?
Home money's receiving into the city, has to go to the general fund and disperse from there.
Good.
Randy?
Just so it's clear, we're gonna have a city, have it during the citywide garage sale, have a garage sale, and then what's not sold goes to Purple Wave after that.
That is correct. And things such as the telephone system, that it's a business telephone system, the, the desire was to just go directly to Purple Wave on that. But this would give citizens the opportunity to come in and purchase items, and then what is not disposed of will go on to Purple Wave.
Hey, George Glover? Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve of inventory list to be sold at Park City Garage Sale and Purple Wave for city administration.
Melvin?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes eight zero. Item I, consider accepting donation of lands in high ridge second addition and associated documents. Doug?
President and council, I, I believe you've accepted this, this in concept. These are the documents to execute it. They are, they were prepared by the developer's attorney, and I've reviewed them and find them appropriate to accomplish what we were gonna accomplish, which was to accept the donation of this eighty acres as a, as a way of getting control of the property with the idea of hopefully coming back to you in the near future to put that into a land bank, which would give us a number of, of other options for redevelopment and then selling the property like, sort of in the way that we've done with, with Bear Hill and, and other developments. So I would recommend that you approve these documents and finalize the acceptance of the donation of the lands in high ridge second addition.
Tom?
I was gonna make that motion.
Jim?
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just might say, if you don't, if you're not for sure where the land is, there's a drawing up there that kind of outlines the land that we're talking about.
Yeah, it's south of Sixty-ninth and west of Hillside, and just east of what would be Grove, and then over the tree line from, from Fairchild. Okay, we've had a good discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes eight zero. Item J, consider ordinance vacating street right-of-way across the property of the Greater Jack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Up on the screen, you'll see their property. The crosshatch area is the road that they're requesting to be vacated. Back when we were looking at this to be a park, I did a layout of football fields and soccer fields and a bunch of stuff, and, and we had to have access to those facilities if we developed them. And so we wrote up a legal description to put a public road through what we then thought would be a park. Later, we decided, or the city council decided to sell the property, and Greater Peoria Properties bought the property from us. And several of you were here when, when auto auctions came and talked to us about this, and that's what they wanted to use the property for, was auto auctions. They're a little skittish of, of parking cars across this property and stuff and having a public road through it. And so they never wanted the public road to begin with. That was something we did when we thought we was putting a park there. So they're now asking us to vacate that, that road so they can move forward with their agreement with auto auctions.
Okay. Tom?
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve an ordinance vacating the right-of-way across the property in Greater Peoria Properties.
Gary?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Ordinance.
Oh, it's an ordinance, I'm sorry. Thank you.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
John Lenier?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
The mo, the ordinance has been approved and- The mo, the ordinance has been approved, and, uh, your ordinance number is one zero three five dash two one seven.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Um, discussion item on funding stormwater utility created by Charter Ordinance C thirty-seven dash twenty fifteen. Doug?
Uh, President and counsel, uh, the, the mayor's not here tonight, so I, I'm gonna speak for him, and hopefully I'm, I'm fairly accurate. Um, we did have a, kind of a lengthy discussion in our staff meeting, uh, which, uh, Jack and Dana were present for, um, earlier last week. His desire was to, uh, move forward on exploring potential funding, um, methodologies for, under the stormwater utility, which you have established under that charter ordinance, uh, two years ago. Um, in those discussions, I recognize that I'm, I may have responded to, uh, at some point in the past, in, in front of the governing body, uh, at least with the mayor, that there might have been some easy way for us to do a tiny little bit of fundraising under this stormwater utility, just to get, just to get things going. Um, I, I, I probably didn't speak very well when I said that, so I'm taking that back. Um, and I've told him that, and so that was, I think, the purpose of having the discussion tonight. Um, I sent you, uh, probably more than you normally get in the way of information, uh, and I certainly wouldn't blame anybody for not having gone through it very, uh, with much of a fine-tooth comb. But both of those papers, um, what they, what they say, uh, is that if you're gonna do this, y-you need to do it right, because, because there is some danger that when you establish, uh, a fun, a funding methodology for a stormwater utility, if you do not do it, um, in a way that rep, where, where the charge that you're levying, that's a bad word, the charge that you are charging, um, bears some relationship to the contribution of the property towards the problem, uh, you are then likely to be found to have imposed a tax, and the levy would be the right word, and that's something we can't do, because you cannot tax, uh, property differently. If you're gonna tax, you gotta tax it, uh, you can't say, well, you pay this tax, you pay that tax, and you pay this tax, which is exactly what you wanna do with a stormwater utility. You want, you wanna, you wanna raise the funds, um, in a way that properties contribute, uh, in some fairly close relationship to what they contribute to the drainage problems or the drainage that we have to deal with. Um, the, the long and short of that is that the, the best way for us to go forward is to put out an RFP for a consultant to give us some advice. Um, one of the consultants that you, you may have recognized the name, Black and Beach, on one of the papers that I sent to you, they are consulting engineers, primarily in Kansas City, they probably have offices all over the country. Um, but they did, um, I have some experience, they worked with Wichita when it's established its stormwater utility, some, probably fifteen or twenty years ago, and they, they, uh, advised the city, they arranged for the flyover and the, and the evaluation of all the properties in the city to establish the, the base for then charging different properties, um, stormwater fees. Uh, that, that was legally challenged all the way to the Supreme Court, um, in Wichita, um, and, and again, I had some experience in that, and, and the city was successful in defending, and in large part, they were successful because of the good advice that they had received from the consulting engineers. Uh, so the, the, I think the purpose tonight would be to get at least some sense from the governing body, uh, of directing staff to put together a propos, a request for proposals, which then would result in us coming back to you sometime in the future with responses to those and, and then asking you to take action, uh, and then you could or you could not, based upon the information that you had at that point. Um, but, but it's, it's my legal opinion that something like this is necessary in order for us, if we're gonna go down this road, to do it correctly, uh, and to set up the utility in a way that we can continue to use it and be successful if there is some sort of challenge. Um, the, the things that make this, uh, maybe painful is the right word, uh, there are, there are going to be, uh, properties i-in our city who are tax-exempt, that, that don't pay property taxes. Uh, the, this fee will go against them. They will have to pay if they have impervious area that contributes, uh, and that's churches and schools and maybe some, and so people get concerned about that, and that, and that's a, that's a political consideration for all, for, for all of you. Likewise, commercial properties, light industrial, industrial properties that have lots of pavement and lots of rooftops, um, all, all of a sudden are faced with paying a monthly fee, which could be substantial. Uh, again, that, that's within your ability to control, because when you have the information from the consultant, you would then be able to decide how much per equivalent residential unit you wanna charge, and you could, you could regulate the, the, the amount of the fee somewhat that way. Um, but again, it has to be related to the contribution, so you can't give, the, the chips have to fall where they may, and, and once you get the methodology, then the, the fee that anybody pays is a function of how much impervious area they have on their property. Um, so that, that, that would be, I think, the mayor's suggestion tonight, and it certainly is mine, that if you, uh, are so inclined that you give staff the authority to go out and do a request for proposal, and then have that information brought back to you, at that point, you would know how much it will cost, and that will be a significant cost if a, if a consultant is to do this sort of legwork to, to, to help us establish this. Um, and then the consultant would also, they would also be able to tell us, um, what they recommended as a method for raising funds. There are, there are some alternatives to the sort of setup that I've given you. There, there, there can be a kind of a flat fee, um, but, but, uh, those are, if you saw the, if you read the information, probably eighty-five to ninety percent of cities that do this do it with impervious area and equivalent residential units, as opposed to a, just a kind of a user fee, uh, because it doesn't raise enough money, is the main reason. I'd be glad to entertain questions.
Gary?
Uh, when we look, looking at the cost for RFPs and the cost for engineering and whatever else goes into this process, are those, uh, costs that can be borne in the future by the, uh, revenue that's raised from this?
Absolutely. Uh, now, there might be a cash flow problem, but I, and I'm not an accountant, and regrettably, Danielle is not here tonight, but, uh, yes, I believe they could be recouped from the utility, once the utility's up and running and, and gathering money. Those would clearly be eligible expenses, Gary.
Great. Okay, that's my question. Tom?
Uh, in alignment with this, and I know Jack was part of the stormwater, uh, study for Sedgwick County. The county commissioners are making noise again about trying to bring something back on funding for drainage and stuff. Uh, I don't know if Doug, you heard anything about that yet or not, or?
I have not.
I think each city's gonna be on their own, but the county maybe do something in the future too on it, so we kinda wanna keep our ear to the ground on that.
One other thing that I'm, that I, for, for benefit of the public that might be watching too, um, that I didn't mention, that the consultant would also help us with, uh, which would be a, a plus for, uh, the, some of those users, um, that might be looking at a, a, a new fee that they'd have to pay. Uh, the utility would, would almost certainly have, uh, the ability, would be set up to give mitigation credits to users, to, to property owners who, who either took care of their own drainage or facilitated the drainage in a way that benefited the city overall. And, and those mitigation credits would then, would then lower the fee they paid every, every month. So there, um, that, that'd be another methodology that we'd need help with, but it certainly is something that makes it more palatable, and, uh, and that would be something we'd wanna set up.
Jack?
Yes, I went to, I'd sent out some information about it, and it was kind of a bad time of the day for council members to go, but, uh, we heard from, uh, Johnson County, and what, how they do it is they have a sales tax. Um, we had looked at this six years ago for the county, and there wasn't a bunch of warm and cuddly feelings about doing that. Uh, one of the things that they're gonna run into, and Wichita's all already rumbling about it, is they have their own fee, and then they don't want the county then to impose another fee on top of their residents. And one of the things I talked about was that if you, if the county went ahead and did this, and did a sales tax, let's say it's one percent, that they handle it similar to what they did with the road tax. They, they currently have a one percent road tax, and what they do is they give cities back a portion of that for the roads. That's how we get some of our special street and highway money. Well, they could do the same thing with the drainage, do the, the sales tax for the drainage, and then rebate some of that money back to the cities to compensate their residents if they're already paying a city tax, so that way they're not getting double taxed. I don't, I'm gonna try to move that forward, but I don't know how far it will get, uh, because there's not a, not a law, a, a lot of desire, uh, by the county, uh, at this point, to do, uh, anything significant in the way of drainage for the county itself. Um, and it's kinda more left up to the cities at this point, so.
Gary?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to instruct staff to pursue, uh, RFP for the purpose of, uh, looking at funding a stormwater utility created by Charter Ordinance C thirty-seven dash twenty fifteen.
Hold second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes eight zero. Uh, we'll do governing body remarks. Um, I'll start with the council. George, Jim?
I don't have any comments tonight.
I just want to say that, um, I'm excited to be up here, and, um, I'm excited to work with everybody, and hopefully we get together and come up with some good ideas for the city for the future.
Welcome.
All I can say is welcome aboard. If there's anything any of us can do, I'm sure, I'm sure there'd be more and wanting to.
Welcome. I had, uh, one thing I wanted to announce. November the eleventh, a Saturday, at eight-thirty, uh, Park City's gonna host Sedgwick County Associations of Cities here at this building. Uh, any council members that can be there that day, we appreciate it, showing support. Be working with staff on getting that set up. I don't have anything, just welcome aboard. Brandy?
I have nothing this evening.
Yeah, I just also wanna welcome Brandy, and anything we can do to help her, kind of snow. Um, the park board is working on Poll Fest, which is coming up, um, so be looking forward to that on Facebook. Uh, we have some new, new activities going on this year, so, uh, all the families come out for that.
Very good. Um, I guess, just a reminder to recap what we talked about earlier, uh, on October seventh, from eight to one, at sixty-eight oh one North Hydraulic, at McLean Park, is the Tree and Limb Dump Day. Um, and you'll just need a picture ID that has a Park City address, or a bill that shows you live in Park City. Uh, the other would be the citywide garage sale is this Saturday in town, so. Nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Salute.
Tom?
Second.
And Jim?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? We are adjourned. No. No.